Hey, everybody. This is Chamber Matt and I am with Jay Rosepape. Today Jay is running for Port Orchard City Council. What position are you running for Jay?
Position number two, Matt.
Okay, Jay's running for position number two. Not that that matters because everybody in the city limits of Port Orchard gets to vote on every candidate and every race. So they're not districts or anything like that. But Jay, thanks for joining us and I've got a few questions here. None of them are particularly tough and I guess so without further ado, we're going to go ahead and jump right on in. Does that sound good?
I'm ready.
You're ready. So the first question I have for you is as you might expect Jay, is just tell us a little bit about yourself, why you decided to run for the Port Orchard City Council and how do you think you can help the community?
Well, first of all, I'm a current council member at the at-large position. So Beck Ashby is retiring from position two, which is a four-year position. And I decided to go for the four-year position instead of the two-year position. So that's why I'm moving from at-large to position two. I basically got involved with the community years ago when we moved here and anything from being a soccer coach to being on the school board. And I had a 20-year naval career where I moved 11 times and I was never part of the community because you kept moving. So this is great being part of the community, being involved with community efforts, helping shape the direction the community is moving. And so when this position came open several years ago on the election, I decided to run with it. Set in on six months worth of meetings in person to see how the council was functioning with the mayor and the council and the directors. Was very impressed in the direction that the city was moving and wanted to be a part of it. So after talking to my family, I decided to run for it and got elected. So that's why I'm here. So what do I bring to the, I think you asked, what am I bringing? I have a very strong diverse background, both anything from financial in the Navy to transportation from my last job with the South Kitsap School District. But I think more importantly is that as one of seven council members, you have to reach a consensus. And that's what's important. You have to bring other people with you if you want to pass legislation, if you want to provide oversight. The mayor is not the council employee nor the director's council employee. We're sort of the legislative branch of the city.
All right. Thank you, Jay. And thank you for your last few years there of service. We appreciate you stepping up and that's something I didn't mention at the introduction here at all, but you know, there are four positions open right now and we have quite a few candidates stepping up and throwing their head into the ring, which is really encouraging going forward. So but thank you for your service in the last few years there. It's Chamber Matt and today I am with Randy Jones who is running for Port Orchard City Council. I think, do you know, do you remember which position you're running for?
Position two, I believe.
Position two, running for position two. And Randy has joined us today to answer a few questions. Tell us a little bit about yourself and you know, why you decided to run for the Port Orchard City Council and how do you think you can help the community?
Yeah, that's a job. It's starting to get easier than I asked that one a few times. Yeah, I've been a charter boat skipper for the last 20 years. I worked in the tobacco industry and I managed three states and I owned my family's restaurant over in Bremerton Ted's Lunch. In my early twenties, I started out as, I actually started out as a real estate agent at 18, being the youngest railer in the state. And at that time I bought my house over here in Port Orchard and then I went into the tobacco industry and then my dad passed away and I took over that, took over his restaurant. And but since 1997, I've been a charter boat operator, I run three boats and when we're registered for 30 people, I ran approximately 1,000 to 1,500 people a year for six to eight hours. So I've been working with people. For the last 10 years, my houses, my house and my neighbors and the property down at Whiskey Gulch has been subjected to possible eminent domain for this bike path that they won't seem to vary. So kind of ashamed of myself that for the last 10 years I haven't ran for city government. I never wanted to be in city government before, but now I feel like I don't have a choice. So that's why I'm getting involved. And on the other issues, I'm looking forward to downsizing my charter boats. And learning as I go and picking up from Sean and Cindy at the city council on, on, on learning, learning, just like all, like the incumbents did from the start.
All right. Thank you. Next question Jay is with growth, growth is inevitable. We've experienced it now. How do you feel about growth that is taking place in South Kitsap and in Port Orchard? And do you support additional development by the city? And specifically, what does responsible development look like?
That's an interesting question. I'll get to that after we go to, you know, talking about the growth. Port Orchard is in the Growth Management Act area. So we, as part of the state Growth Management Act, were required to have a certain amount of growth and take development and citizens in, you know, as they want to come. Obviously, we're not forcing them to come to South Kitsap, which is a little bit different than South Kitsap itself, which is rural in nature. So for example, you might have an area that you could have 20 residents in an acre in the city. You know, being in an apartment complex or whatever, where out in the county, there are areas that it's one resident for 10 acres, five or 10 acres, and you can't do anything else with that property. So basically, Port Orchard is going to become, based on density, is going to become a larger city and have more people incorporated. How you manage it strategically and quite frankly, infrastructure and financially is the key to this process. And I think that the city is doing a good job, actually better than a good job, a great job of working with the developers to ensure A, our code holds them responsible, but two, that the infrastructure is in place before these developments come. So you're starting to see that in areas like down off of Sydney, where some of the developments going in down by Albertson's and Gray Chevrolet, where the developers are putting in the lift station and financing that against future credits. So we don't collect, we don't collect the revenues as the residents are, excuse me, as the apartment complex is built. We were basically getting the infrastructure upfront. And that's really great. And we're seeing the same thing over west of 16, off Old Clifton with the roundabout that was placed up there off of, I believe, off of, used to be called Campus Parkway. That's been put in by developers, same way with one of the lift stations and the reservoir. So we're working with developers to make sure that we get the infrastructure in place. But more importantly, we're also continuing to focus on our code to make sure that we're holding them responsible for what is being built. And it's just not slapping something up. So it's a win-win, I believe.
All right. So the next question, a little bit more complicated, but it is, growth is inevitable. How do you feel about growth that is taking place in South Kitsap? And do you support additional development in the city? Specifically, what does responsible development look like?
Well, obviously, new homes are going to need to be built. We need to make sure we're not turning down old homes, not just our three homes. The city's kind of passed the buck on the government campus as being a county thing, but it's still in the heart of our city. I would like to focus on, on the housing and on development for, for homes and not on some of the crazy bike paths and, and even the community center. I think it's distracting from, from what's from the real issue, which is going to be the more housing that's needed. And I think it's the funds and, and the distraction is there. Our traffic issues, the Tremont Circle, there was no reason for that to send, set idle for the last year and a half. We need to make sure another another disaster like that doesn't happen on the next big traffic and highway improvement because that was bad. Now, the year and a half of that project just sitting idle.
Well, I did, I said, infrastructure is critical to growth and development in a community. And how would you best handle the growing infrastructure needs in the city and the impacts of increased growth?
That's really a good question, Matt. And the way the city has done this is by working with developers so that they're putting the infrastructure upfront so that the, the infrastructure is here before the citizens, that the growth arrives. We're seeing that already with down by Albertson's and Gray Chevrolet, where the new apartment complexes are going up and a new lift station is coming in. We're seeing it out by McCormick Village where they put a roundabout in and also the new 580 reservoir. Those are all funded by the developers upfront so that we can have, we can sign off on having the infrastructure in before the people get here. The other thing we did is we've increased the impact fees and connection fees for sewer and water and roads so that people are paying their fair share. And I know this will be a pass-on cost to the people that are buying the residence by the developers. Not, not all of it, but it keeps the current residents from paying for these infrastructure improvements and that's huge. Now, the city residents and the new residents, you know, we have things that need to be rebuilt. The Marina Pump Station is desperately in need of rebuilding. We're drilling new wells for water, but where we can make a clear distinction of tying it to new growth. We're making sure that developers are paying those costs so that current residents are not.
All right. Thank you, Jay. So next question Randy is on infrastructure. And infrastructure is critical to the growth and development of a community. How would you best handle the growing infrastructure needs in the city and the impacts of increased population?
By making that truly our only real main priority. That has to be number one. The other issues are important. We have to deal with them, but again, not, not taking the focus off of that. That these other projects and things seem to be taking up a great deal of the city employees' time and and what did we do wrong with McCormick Woods Water? What did we do wrong with the Tremont Roundabout? We need, that has to be made accountable for. It can't happen again. You choose insurance was blocked out of the general public for a year. And so if we need to hire new employees that understand the issue, then so be it. But that has, but the housing and the traffic has to be our real concern. No other projects like that. Now homeless, homeless crime and, and what we can do about that, that, that needs to be dealt with as it goes. But these other improvements need to be shut down and we need to focus in on the housing issue. Again, I had one little thing to add to that. I do understand that I don't know the, all the details. And we're, our group, some of the others are also fighting for transparency because we feel like we're hitting a brick wall when we ask. That's something we want to change and and so we will have to learn and I'm going to have to learn from Sean and Cindy, you know, to get up to speed. And the other candidate Sean is detail oriented, so he will certainly dive right into it. The most detail-oriented and person I've ever met.
So Jay did a great job explaining the growth and explaining infrastructure and things like that, but being the South Kitsap Chamber of Commerce, I would be remiss if I did not ask you a couple of business questions. So the first one I have is you know, what impact or influence do you think the city has on local businesses in South Kitsap and Port Orchard?
I think it's a huge partnership. I don't think it's just downtown. We look at the Bethel Corridor because we go all the way out to Fred Meyer. Also, there's going to be new businesses west of 16, out in McCormick Village. There's an area that's there that's ripe for development by somebody that wants to put stores, boutique or otherwise out there. We tend to focus just on downtown and it's very important because it's how the image of Port Orchard is conveyed. So we influence a lot of how we do in our advertising. We have a lodging tax committee that works with nonprofits to make sure that Port Orchard is seen as a welcoming and nurturing place. You yourself and POPS, Representative Quarter Bay Street Association, work with the Economic Development Committee, you know, within the city to, you know, to give your input about how we can do things better. So we don't run businesses. A person comes in with a business, they have to have their business model and how to succeed. I think we need to be their cheerleaders. I think that we need to do everything that we can to help them succeed. But it's a fine line when people say, hey, you should be giving money to this business or something. And that, that comes out being, for lack of better words, as a handout. And I don't think that's the right way to go. But we need to work with people and we need to make sure that everything we can do to help them succeed, that we can do.
All right. Super. Thank you. And so, all right. So next question being is that we are the, the South Kitsap Chamber of Commerce. What impact or influence do you think the city has on local businesses here in South Kitsap and in Port Orchard?
That's a, that's a good one. You know, it's a, it's kind of an us versus them mentality. And as a charter boat operator, I've seen it when I've been with other ports and it's kind of like an evolution where it gets difficult to work with them and then it becomes really easy to work with them. They kind of finally get it. Now, not to say I don't understand where they're coming from, at least in the ports, you know, they work with difficult people and I'm sure so does the city. And upset people and the motions run high. But what we need to do is be, you know, the new, the next city council, whoever it be, needs to reach out to the businessmen and, and understand their plights, see things from their point of view and help when they can. Sometimes they can't. Sometimes the city has to say, we can't do this for you. Or we, you know, there's a reason we're doing what we're doing. But that would be part of it is to let the businessman know why they're doing it and not, yeah, no, it just can't be done. And I think that's kind of the mentality now is like, we know what's best. Larry Coppola said that Walmart and Fred Meyer were the biggest taxpayers in the, in the city of Port Orchard. They're not. The people that paid the 9% sales tax that went in there are. And those are the priorities now. Glad Walmart's there and glad Fred Meyer's there, brings in business from outside the city limits. But, but that money came from the people purchasing. Fred Meyer and Walmart aren't there to lose money. So they're doing okay. And maybe Safeway and Albertson's aren't. So the money's still going to come. And I'm glad that the money is coming in from outside of the city limits. But the taxpayers, the 15,000 people that are voting November 2nd, they're the ones that matter. That is the priority and it is their money that is paying for city hall.
Thank you. And so, so Jay, the next question here is, you know, you kind of touched on it a little bit there. Because I want to talk about, you know, the regulations that are facing the local businesses and, you know, and, and regulations are growing at all levels of government and many of them negatively impact local businesses. You talk about working together with the businesses without giving them a hand up, which I agree, you know.
Hand out, not a hand up.
Hand out, you're right. Good distinction, outstanding distinction. What would be your approach to helping businesses succeed without giving them a handout?
Well, I think that there's a couple of things. We, you know, with COVID, with some of the money that we got, we gave grants to businesses to help them pay their rent for citizens. We helped defer water and sewer cost. We also did that with the businesses. The city is able to legally charge the BNO tax to businesses. We do not in Port Orchard. Gig Harbor and Bremerton do. And we keep that off the table. We haven't talked about that in the four years that I've been on the, on the council. We are very strategic in our code, looking at code when break will bring changes or I hate to use the word exceptions. You know, we take a look at that, especially on zoning. And a perfect example of that is right now, and I don't know if this is a future question or not, because affordable housing is a very tough one. And we recently made a zoning change to allow a congregate unit to be built, which will help people live downtown, which is always the thing is, hey, we need people downtown for the businesses to succeed. We just had a, one of the other candidates that's running said, hey, I'm negatively impacted by the sign ordinance that you all have. We need to get this corrected and I'm not the only one impacted by this. And we're going like, okay, let's bring it up. Let's, let's work on this. So I think that connection to the community is very important for the whole community, not just downtown, but all, all the businesses. And if we can keep that going, then we'll get people here. And I'll touch back on the other answer about being a cheerleader. You know, the, the chamber does a great job of being inclusive. You recently rebranded, you know, from Port Orchard to South Kitsap and being inclusive to not make it just down, about downtown, but making it the whole community. Because we essentially doubled our size with the annexation in 2009. And those businesses, people west of 16 want to see a vibrant and active community downtown. And that's very important. I'm really, the only thing I'm really sorry about is, you know, one of my sayings is you can't build the Hoover Dam anymore in two years. You know, because it takes time with regulations, it takes time for studies, whether it be environmental. And there's always a good reason why these things came into place. But our development has lagged in our, you know, downtown. And I hope seriously that what's happening with the businesses downtown, the, the bank, Kitsap Bank and the Kitsap community, I mean, the Port Orchard Community Center is truly going to revitalize downtown and make us a destination of choice. And I think we're already seeing that, to be honest with you. People are moving here for a reason. And, and it's not just because we have low-cost housing.
Right. Yeah. All right. Thank you for that, Jay. Yeah. Another, another question on the business from the business side of things. It's with growing regulation at all levels of government negatively impacting local businesses. What would be your approach to helping businesses succeed in Port Orchard?
That'd be a tough one to say at this point in time, not being in the loop. But I think that some businesses, for example, like that one place that went up against, you know, went up against the government. Good, bad or indifferent, they should be applauded. That took, that took a lot of guts on his part. That was, that's a phenomenal man to go against that, to run a restaurant. And I've been there, you know, and Whiskey Gulch has been there. It is a tough business and it is a time-consuming business. And then to have to deal with new regulations as opposed to even apply, you know, in my business and the charter boat business, as opposed to keeping up with the existing regulations and, and new priorities. It's tough. And all that, then you have to deal with employee issues. So that one place, he should be applauded for it. And Chuck and Robert McGee should be applauded for getting through the pandemic. We need to do what we can to take the burden off their shoulders. People working for the government that are going to get paid for 40-hour a week, imposing their will on people that work a 60 to 80-hour week. It's unfathomable. And again, it cannot be an us versus them mentality because the small business owners and all their employees get to go home after, after the end of the shift. The owners don't.
Thank you, Randy, for that answer. And then now. You know, you've done a great job and we are at the last question. And it's funny because a lot of the, a lot of the people say that it's the toughest question. I say the toughest one for last because this is the one where you got to talk about yourself and some people are uncomfortable doing that. You know, talking about how great you are. This is your chance to blow your own horn because, you know, the question is, is very short and simple is, you know, why are you the best choice for the Port Orchard City Council?
Well, right now, there's a couple of things I want to say. The first one is I've had the job for four years. I've learned a lot during that timeframe. I've served on the land use committee, currently the chair of the land use committee. I'm the chair of the lodging tax committee, which is very important to downtown. Also served on the transportation committee, a new committee that stood to look up at roads and how we apply for grants to improve the road infrastructure. Probably leaving one out. I'm a backup to several committees and I served on the Kitsap Transit Board of Commissioners for two years. So there's a lot of experience that would get lost if I'm not reelected. One of the things that I will say that Clancy Donlin, when he was in, when I defeated him, I met him for a coffee afterwards. And he said right up front that he wished he had been more active in learning about the city. And after four years, I finally feel like I'm getting up to speed on it, about how much there is to know about it and, and, and to learn about it. Also, as I want to point out before, I think consensus building is truly important, being one of seven. If you can't get three other council members to come along with you, it's not going to happen. And you can't undervalue that. You know, we're nonpartisan, which is huge. And there's a reason for that. I also would ask voters, if I can reach out with this, to not go down the social media rabbit hole. Like I said, there's information that you've asked questions to. We've also had questions from the Kitsap Sun, Port Orchard Independent, POPS, other, you know, other forums that have been held. And ask people for their answers on the facts. What have you done? Don't listen to opinions. My favorite quote that I've used recently is Senator Patrick Moynihan once said, we're all entitled to our own opinions, but there's only one set of facts. So when you hear words that have been thrown around of being in pocket of lobbyists or no transparency or corruption, I ask you to check, ask for facts behind them. We all have an email address. Ask for the facts. So that's what I think I'm bringing to the table. I'm very, very So that's what I think I'm bringing to the table. Uh I'm very, very pleased to work with the. City of Port Orchard and the citizens of Port Orchard. I believe in the direction that Port Orchard is moving. And I believe in the citizens of Port Orchard. That's my end uh end statement.
Alright, Randy, so the the last question is is the the question that uh I always ask at the end, and and it's an opportunity for you to um. Blow your own horn, so to speak, and and talk about yourself. But why do you think you are the best choice for city council?
Uh okay, um I just kind of answered this about an hour ago. Um biggest reason is, whether I liked it or not. For the last twenty years, I've spent a lot of time with my customers. Uh unlike a restaurant, not to pick on restaurants, you work with your customers, you feed them, they leave. Uh my my customers come from within the city and um from all over the world. They're on my boat for six to eight hours a day. And uh in um kind of a captive audience on both parts. So um my previous uh oh uh owner of my boat, I worked for in nineteen seventy-nine, was the mayor of Brim- Bremerton for eighteen years. He got a lot done using his charter boat. And uh mostly because you have a captive audience. You spend the time to get to know people. And not just fifteen minutes of I came in, you know, walking into city hall, demanding this or that or the other thing and and. And that that citizen is a pain in their butt. You know, uh there's more to it. There's a reason he came in. And I get that. Uh the the decisions that I make as a businessman. Um I have to live with. If I have a a project, I've had lots of large boats that have came my way. That just were a dream for me. But when I did the numbers and and uh the reality of it is. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you should do something. And uh the other thing is, I do have a little bit of a cynical note to me. In the sense that when a project comes to the city, I I look at who benefits. And why is it so important to them? And uh if I don't like the answer. Uh then then I want to look into it. And our transparency and our uh and our city hall is zero. And uh that is, that's what got me to run now. And I'm ashamed to say that I didn't run two years ago or four years. Go or six years ago, no matter what was happening in my life. Because this is more important than my charter boat business. And I and it's a, believe me when I say it can be a very fun job. Um but this is more important. I wish somebody else could have done it, but if it has to be me, um I will go in full force.
Alright, thank you, Randy. So so there you have it. This is Randy Jones um running uh for District um. Two um in in the city. And everybody in the city gets to vote for each of the districts, so it doesn't matter where you live. And there is no predefined districts uh within city limits. Um and I want to thank you, Randy, for taking the time and stepping up. To uh to take on this challenge. Um best of luck to you as as time goes by. Uh like I said, um we got about two, two weeks before the uh the ballots are due. And everybody should have their ballots by now, so I would encourage everybody to vote. Um I've got this video. I've got videos on um other races in South Kitsap that are going on. I would encourage everybody to go out and watch those. And um inform themselves and, you know, and if you need to get a hold of one of the candidates, you can find their information out on. Um at the county website, they've got their um their email addresses and things like that. So I would encourage everybody to reach out to the candidates if you have any questions. Or if you um have concerns, or if you, of course, if you want to give them money, they probably take that too for for campaign purposes, so. So.
Just just give it to Irene and she'll make the signs.
There you go. So thanks, everybody, for for watching today. Thank you, Randy, for joining us. Um I want to thank uh Jay for for his participation in the um interviews also. And as always, I remember that here in in Port Orchard and in South Kits, I would encourage you to uh love local and shop local. Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.